Call to order, the city council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Before we get started on our meeting, I would like to note the passing of District One resident Stephen Duran. Mr. Duran is the husband of Representative Monica Duran. Monica Duran represents our city in the Colorado State Legislature and, of course, was a member of this council for a number of years. And I want to express our condolences to the family. So we will have the flag show up in just a moment. If you would please stand as you are able and join me in pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would the clerk please call the roll of the members? Mr. Ohm?
Here.
Ms. Hoppy?
Present.
Mr. Stites?
Present.
Ms. Hulteen?
Present.
Dr. Weaver?
Here.
Ms. Hutchinson?
Present.
Ms. Dozeman?
Here.
Ms. Nosler Beck?
Present.
Mr. Mayor, I do believe we have all eight members of council here. Thank you very much, and thank you, councilors, for joining us tonight. In your package, we have a number of minutes for various meetings. We have the September twenty, two thousand and twenty-one study session notes. We have the December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one city council meeting minutes. We have the January ten, two thousand and twenty-two city council meeting minutes. We have the January twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-two city council minutes. And we have the January twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-two special study session notes. Are there any corrections to these documents? Okay, seeing none, we'll let the minutes and notes stand approved as presented with our thanks to the clerk.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just real quick on that, we apologize for so many minutes on one meeting, but we should be all caught up now. We did an audit and found out there was a couple from last year that weren't brought to council and approved, so we should be all caught up at this point.
Okay, and thank you for not bringing all a dozen of those or ten of those at one time, so at least we divided it in half. So, thank you very much. Any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll see the, we'll let the agenda stay as presented. I'm pleased to have tonight a proclamation in support of Black History Month, and I would like to invite Terry Gale and Mary Ann Schilling to join us online. They are members of our Wheat Ridge Task Force for Equity and Diversity. So, this is a proclamation in support of Black History Month, February two thousand and twenty-two. Whereas February's Black History Month is an annual celebration of achievements by Black Americans, recognition of their central role in U.S. history, and a time to reflect on the continued struggle for racial justice and equality. And whereas, experts say understanding Black history and learning more about systemic racism is essential for our country to grow as a nation. And whereas, Carter G. Woodson, known as the father of Black history, developed Black History Month. Woodson, whose parents were enslaved, was an author, historian, and the second Black American to earn a PhD at Harvard University. And whereas, Woodson chose February to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass, a famed abolitionist who escaped from slavery, and President Abraham Lincoln, who formally abolished slavery. And whereas, with the resolution passed in two thousand and twenty, the Wheat Ridge City Council confirmed that, quote, "Racism and hate have no place in our city, and there is much work to be done to stop pervasive, longstanding, and devastating racial injustice in our community." And whereas, the Wheat Ridge Race and Equity Task Force, which consists of diverse and multiple perspectives, began working in two thousand and twenty-one to review city policies, services, ordinances, and community systems, and identify policies and practices that contribute to discrimination. And whereas, the city of Wheat Ridge recognizes the importance of Black History Month and our ongoing commitment to continuous improvement and self-reflection in order to become more inclusive and responsive community. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bud Starke, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge and the Wheat Ridge City Council formally designate the month of February two thousand and twenty-two as Black History Month, dated this fourteenth day of February two thousand and twenty-two by Bud Starke. And Mr. Gale, I'd like to, if you'd like to say a few words, we'd love to hear from you. Or Ms. Schilling?
So, thank you for recognizing Black History Month, and thank you for having me be part of the task force, and thank everyone's continual commitment to making equality a real thing. And then I just want to read one quote from Maya Angelou. "I've learned that people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel." So, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for joining us tonight. We appreciate it, and we appreciate the work that you and your colleagues and Mary Ann Schilling, I know, is sort of guiding an effort, and we appreciate you being here in our community, carrying on that work. So, thank you so much. Okay. We are now at our public's right to speak. The public may speak on any matter, not on the agenda, for a maximum of three minutes under the public's right to speak. We will bring you into the meeting. We are in a virtual format. If you would like to speak during the meeting, then if you would raise your hand, and the icon for that is located at the bottom of your screen, I believe, let me see if I can find it, and it should be, there's a, something's called a raise hand function. We'll see your hand there and bring you into the meeting. And if you are on the telephone, you may raise your hand by hitting star nine. And then if you hit star six, that will unmute you. So, that's the technology section of this instruction. And so, you'll have three minutes to speak, and this is really any item that is not on the agenda. And there is an item on here, a public hearing for a rezoning of property at ninety-six-oh-five West Thirty-eighth Avenue. If you wish to speak on that, if you would please hold your comments until Agenda Item Number Two, and there will be a public hearing, and you'll be able to speak on that item at that time. So, I'll ask Ms. Schilling if there's anyone with their hands raised that would like to speak.
Mayor, our first on deck is Mr. Jerry DiTulio.
Okay, Mr. DiTulio. When you come on online, if you would please give us your first name and your last name, if you'd spell your last name for the record, and give us an address, and then you'll have three minutes to speak, and I believe our mayor pro tem will be timing us tonight. So, Mr. DiTulio, at your convenience.
Thank you. This is Jerry DiTulio at Luden Street in Wheat Ridge. Just real quick, maybe some of you know that the Wheat Ridge Rotary Foundation gives out scholarships to high school students for college, and they've been doing this for quite a few years. They, most of the scholarships go to students from Wheat Ridge High School or Jefferson. And you may also know that there's Walt Pettit, who's a member, and a big volunteer for the city of Wheat Ridge in many capacities. A Walt Pettit Scholarship Endowment Fund has been formed to allow the foundation to give out more scholarships to deserving students at Jefferson and Wheat Ridge High School. And we're almost there. We're looking at a ten thousand dollar endowment, or a few thousand dollars short. And so I was coming in to ask the city council if they were interested in maybe looking at some of their public outreach funds to fill that gap. Councilmember Dozeman, I believe, has already done it, and she can maybe explain more about it under official's matters. But if you have your funds available, you know, two fifty to five hundred dollars would be awesome to complete that fund, and that should fund more scholarships in the future, and that money just rolls to those students. The average scholarship, according to Dick Matthews, is around two thousand dollars a year per student. And a ten thousand dollar endowment helps fund that every year for four years or in perpetuity, all the other monies that are in the foundation. So, if you're interested, I'd appreciate it if you could talk to the county, city manager, and also working, donating some of those funds to the Wheat Ridge Rotary Foundation, and the endowment especially goes to the Walt Pettit Endowment. So, thanks for doing that and listening, and like I said, councilmember Dozeman, she's already started the process, and I think she gave a check last week, right? So, anyway, thanks for listening and hope to hear from you soon.
Thank you. Ms. Schilling, do we have additional speakers for public's right to speak?
Mayor, we have quite a few people on the call, but I don't see any other hands up.
Okay.
Would you like to wait a moment, perhaps?
All right, if you're, if you're on the telephone who would like to speak, once again, if you hit star nine, your hand will go up and star six will unmute you.
I have a caller, Mayor, phone number ending one-seven-three-seven. They just need to unmute on their end.
And if, when you come online, if you please give us your first name, last name, and your address.
So, number one-seven-three-seven, if you could hit star six on your phone, that should unmute you. You're unmuted on my end. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Sean Field. I live at fifty-three forty, fifty-three forty-four Oak Court in Arvada. I just wanted to come online. I know during the special session, I believe it was on the twenty-fourth of January, there were several of my neighbors, and we're going to kind of keep in contact with this, but the Fifty-Fourth and Miller Streets, it was brought up during a special session, that money was awarded to the Foothills Housing Authority. And like the gentleman that just said at the beginning of this meeting today, it's not always what you hear from your neighbors, but you don't want to forget what your neighbors have said. And I want to kind of continue to reiterate that, that there was at least fifteen to twenty different neighbors from our neighborhood that were directly opposed to any kind of expansion of the Fifty-Fourth and Miller Street. It was mentioned that it was affordable housing, low-income housing, however it wants to be qualified, but there was still numerous individuals in our community that had heard about it after the fact. And I just wanted to keep this in the mind of city council for Wheat Ridge, that our citizens and our neighbors directly next to us as well are going to continue to monitor this, and we are directly opposed to any kind of further expansion of that parcel of land. So, that's all I had to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Scheck, do we have additional speakers wishing to speak tonight?
We do. We have phone number ending in four-zero-five-seven. Again, four-zero-five-seven, if you could press star six on your end, that would be great. Thank you. There we go.
Hello, this is Oderka Siglus. I live at one-zero-five-eight-zero West Thirty-Fourth Avenue. And I was just wondering why city council meetings aren't shown on Channel Eight. And I think it would be really important to get that back. The other thing I was hoping is that if you do get it back, if you, it would be great to have a call at the bottom to let people know how they can join by telephone if they don't have access to the internet, just make it a lot easier for all of us. I know I had to try to find the access number on the internet and come back, but I know there's a lot of people, especially some of the older folks in Wheat Ridge, that don't have access to the internet, so it'd be great if they could watch it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Schilling, my notes indicate that we are, we should be on Channel Eight. Do you, do you know whether that is in fact the case?
I'm just following up now, Mayor, with our videographer with Jesse, who...
Okay. Because my notes say that also, in addition to Channel Eight, and we'll check to see that we're on Channel Eight, we should be, we intended to be, and we intend to be, you can also join this meeting apparently at www.wheatridgespeaks.org, and join it on YouTube So hopefully through one of those channels, you're able to view our meetings, because we certainly want them viewed, so thank you very much.
I'm sorry, sorry, Mayor, I do have confirmation from Mr. Johnson that we're broadcasting right now.
Okay, that's great to hear. All right. Are there any, is there another speaker who would like to speak tonight? Under public's right to speak?
We don't have any new speakers with their hands up, Mayor.
Okay. I'll give it just a couple of more seconds. If you'd like to speak and you're on the telephone, please hit star nine.
Would you have a former speaker, Mayor, who has their hand back up, perhaps with a clarification?
You know, I will take a clarification. You're only allowed to speak one time, so if you want to speak, please join me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm looking at Channel Eight right now, and there's nothing on. And this is not the first time this has happened, so even if you're showing that it's broadcasting, it's not being...
We'll have our staff investigate that. Thank you for letting us know that.
Perhaps with a clarification?
You know, I will take a clarification. You're only allowed to...
I just, sorry, that was my echo probably. I just pulled up Channel Eight. It's running at my house.
Okay. Very good. We will go on then to our agenda items. The first item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Ms. Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would you like me to read the issue statements as well?
If you would read, please, the issue statements on both items.
Okay. Consent Agenda Item 1A, Resolution Number Seven, two thousand and twenty-two, a resolution amending the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation for the reappropriation and reincumbrence of two thousand and twenty-one fiscal year encumbered funds in the amount of four million, four-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand, twenty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents. The issue, there are forty-four open purchase orders from the two thousand and twenty-one budget that will be carried over to the two thousand and twenty-two budget. Each purchase order is associated with a specific project that was not fully completed in the two thousand and twenty-one fiscal year. The funds which were encumbered for these purchase orders were transferred to the unreserved fund balance of the relevant fund when the purchase orders were closed. To continue or close out these projects in two thousand and twenty-two, a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of four million, four-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand, twenty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents is necessary to allow transfer of these funds into specific budget line items in the two thousand and twenty-two budget. Consent Agenda Item 1B, motion to approve installation of a traffic calming device on Forty-Sixth Avenue between Lamar Street and J Street in accordance with the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. The issue, residents on Forty-Sixth Avenue petitioned the city to address traffic issues for the street segment from Lamar Street to J Street. In accordance with the city's Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, the city met with the residents at a neighborhood meeting and subsequently discussed and devised a plan to mitigate traffic issues. The residents then secured a petition with a necessary number of property owner signatures supporting the installation of a speed hump in accordance with the NTMP policy and are hereby seeking approval for implementation.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items Number 1A and 1B?
I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 1A and 1B.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Stites. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand, and will the clerk please record the votes?
You're on mute, Mr. Kirkpatrick.
So sorry. Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed eight to nothing. Thank you very much. With that, we will move to Agenda Item Number Two. Ms. Weaver, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is council bill number zero-one-dash-two-zero-two-two, an ordinance approving rezoning of property located at ninety-six-oh-five West Thirty-eighth Avenue from Residential One, or R-One, to Residential 1B, or R-One-B. This is case number WZ-dash-twenty-one-dash-twelve. The applicant is requesting approval of a zone change from R-One to R-One-B, the property located in nineteen-oh-five West Thirty-Eight. The zone chain retains the single-family character of the neighborhood and could allow the oversized subject property to accommodate two single-family homes in the future.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing, and it is quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. If you intend to speak on this item, by speaking, you agree to tell the truth as you understand it. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Mr. Mayor, our senior planner Stephanie Stevens is here this evening. We also have, yeah, sorry, we also have our planning manager here, Lauren Mikulak, who else will help with questions.
Okay. Please continue.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen so we can get the presentation going. Okay. So my name is Stephanie Stevens, and I'm a planner here in the Community Development Department at the city of Wheat Ridge. I'm presenting case number WZ-twenty-one-twelve, which is a request for approval of a zone change from Residential One to Residential 1B at ninety-six-oh-five West Thirty-eighth Avenue. I would like to enter into the public records the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The property is within the city of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met. Therefore, the city council has jurisdiction to hear this case. The subject property is outlined in the screen in red. The property is located at the northeast corner of West Thirty-eighth Avenue in Independence Court and is an oversized corner lot. The lot measures to be about twenty-one thousand and sixty-five square feet in size, almost twice the minimum size required for R-One zoning. The lot width parallel to West Thirty-eighth Avenue is a hundred and forty feet, and the lot width parallel to Independence Court is a hundred and fifty feet. The site is currently vacant, but used to contain a single-family house built in eighteen-ninety-eight that was demolished in two thousand and twenty. The property is currently zoned Residential One. The surrounding properties are also zoned R-One and Residential Two. There's a pocket of R-two-A zoning to the southwest. Most of the surrounding uses are single-family and duplex residential uses. And the West Thirty-eighth Avenue and Kipling Street major intersection is about two blocks west. This is a view of the subject property looking northeast from the intersection of West Thirty-eighth Avenue and Independence Court. Note, the house was demolished in two thousand and twenty. The applicant is requesting a zone change to R-One-B, so they can subdivide the oversized lot and build two single-family homes. While R-One-B is not located in the area, the single-family zone district is consistent with the surrounding area and would not result in a significant change in character. The table on the screen compares the existing Residential One to the proposed Residential 1B zoning standards. R-One-B was determined to be the most appropriate because it retains the single-family character of the area, and no variances would be necessary to accommodate future development. In a subdivided condition, it would result in two lots which are compatible in size with surrounding conditions. With over twenty thousand square feet to work with, the subject property would accommodate two single-family homes on lots that far exceed the minimum lot area requirement of R-One-B. As a requirement of the zone change process, a neighborhood meeting was held on August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, in a virtual Zoom meeting setting. Nine people attended the meeting from the public, and notes from the meeting are included in the staff report. Some concerns were expressed about potential increased density. Since Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we sent the application on referral to outside agencies, including fire, water, and sanitation, as well as completed an internal review. We had not received concerns or objections from internal departments or outside agencies. Before the hearing, the property was posted for fifteen days, and letters were sent to property owners within a six, and residents within a six-hundred-foot radius. The project was also posted to Wheat Ridge Speaks. We received six comments on Wheat Ridge Speaks concerning density setback and coverage. Staff reviews rezoning based on several criteria, including consistency with the comprehensive plan. The city's comprehensive plan identifies this area with a neighborhood designation. The subject proposal remains in keeping with this designation. City goals that are met with this rezoning proposal include encouraging reinvestment of property, maintaining consistent character, and creating opportunities for homeownership. Ultimately, staff is recommending approval of the request. Based on the character and land use patterns in the area, the R-One-B zone district is most appropriate to accommodate the applicant's proposal for two single-family homes, and the zone change should not result in adverse effects of the surrounding area. Staff finds a zone change to R-One-B is supported by the city's comprehensive plan neighborhood designation and retains the single-family character of the neighborhood. Planning Commission reviewed the request on December sixteenth, public hearing, and recommended approval. If city council approves the rezoning, the zone change is approved. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Uh, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. We also have the applicant on board here who does not plan on making a presentation, but they would like to introduce themselves, if that's okay? I'd like to turn it over to Jake Hill.
Good.
Hey, everybody. So my name is Jake Hill. Just a little, quick little thing here. My fiance and I recently purchased a property at nine-six-oh-five West Thirty-eighth Avenue with a vision to make this our long-term residence. Being a large lot, we're exploring our options for the best use. We think that this is a good way to increase homeownership and would create an opportunity to have a nice home in a quality neighborhood for us as well as another family. And that's all I have for you guys.
Thank you. Before I go to question some counsel, I would like to open this up to the public for, to speak on this issue. If you would like to speak on this issue, please raise your hand in the Zoom format, or you may hit star nine if you're on the telephone, and we will bring you into the meeting. And I'll ask Ms. Scheck if we have speakers to join us.
We do. The first up, Mayor, is Carol Matthews.
Okay, Ms. Matthews, and when you, if you would, before you start speaking, give us your name, first name and last name, if you'd spell your last name for the record, and give us an address, please.
I'm Carol Matthews, thirty-eight fifty-one Hoyt Street, Wheat Ridge. Matthews, M.A.T.H.E.W.S. As we have reiterated in Planning Commission and in other things, we have no, we as a neighborhood, and we, I am directly, I got a notice, I am directly adjacent to this property. We have no problem with splitting the lot. We have a huge problem, unsurmountable, unacceptable, to change it to R-One-B. R-One-B allows this gentleman to build on forty percent of the lot. It is a large lot. We have very large houses in our neighborhood, and they are only built on twenty-five percent. They all have off-street parking. We are welcome to houses. That's not the problem. We think that he should have a variance to give him the privilege of the smaller lot, but we will demand that he build within the R-One speculations, just like the rest of us did. And I think someone would be very wise to advise Mr. Hill on the process of petitioning from the citizens. We've been very successful with Hardee's, two blocks away, and in several other properties in Wheat Ridge, and we are prepared to do that. So if you want to look at about six months down the road, being back here trying to get your property approved, continue with this. Otherwise, we welcome you to the neighborhood. You can build two houses on twenty-five percent of the lot with the setbacks that are within R-One, not R-One-B. Thank you very much, and we hope that you will make a wise decision.
Thank you. Ms. Scheck, do we have another speaker?
Mayor, I don't see anyone else with their hand up.
Okay, I'll give it just a couple of more seconds. If you would like to speak on this issue from the public, you may... you may do so now. If you are on the telephone, you may hit star nine, and that will raise your hand, and we can bring you into the meeting.
I don't believe there's any other speakers, Mayor.
Okay, then we will close. Our public's right to speak on this, and I will go to council for questions of staff or the applicant. Mr. Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. How does the R1B zoning rank in terms of density in the city's code? Is it like the second from the last as far as density or third from last?
So after R1B, so it's Residential 1 and then Residential 1B. Residential 2 would be like kind of your duplex lot, and Residential 3 is typically your multifamily.
Okay. And then, and then my next question is, is how do the setbacks of, well, let me back this up. So looking at that zoning map, west of the subject property, that is R2. And then there are the subject property and the lot to the east of that. Those are both R1, but then it's R2 next to that, correct? And then across the street, Kitty Corn from the subject property, that is R2. How, how do the setbacks of R2 compare to R1B?
Setbacks for R2 are quite comparable. The biggest difference between Residential 2 and R1B is probably the lot area requirement for single-family homes, which is required for R1B to be 7,500 square feet. And for R2, it is, sorry, 9,000 square feet.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. We have Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Stephanie, just a quick follow-up on what you just said about the lot size. Because R2 typically is for duplexes, do you feel that that's the reason why this lot size has to be larger?
Yes, for the difference between the 9,000 and 7,500. Yeah, it's typically for denser developments.
So under R2, someone could build a duplex, so two homes on, on a lot that's 9,000 square feet. And under R1B, they can only build one home under a lot that's 7,500 square feet. So really, just within like a couple of thousand square feet, they're putting two homes onto, they can build two homes onto a space that is not really significantly larger than an R1B, right?
Yeah, so one clarification is that two-family homes in R2 would require 12,500 square feet of lot area. One big point of clarification on this site is that they're just short of the amount of lot area to build under R1 to get two single-family homes. So the requirement is for 12,500 square feet, and they're almost at 20, they're at about 20,065 square feet for this.
Ms. Hoppe?
I think you, Stephanie, can you remind me, what is the, what is the minimum lot area for R1C? You know, in District 1, there's significant amount of R1C.
That's at 5,000 square foot.
And that's our, that's our smallest residential designation, R1C?
That's correct, and I apologize. I forgot that one when I was listing them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions from council? Mr. Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question. So if it was to remain zoned as a just regular straight R1, you can only put one house basically on that property, right? Ms. Matthews suggested doing, keeping it R1 and doing a variance. Is that a possibility, or is that, is that not feasible, or?
Good question. So we considered it when we reviewed this initially, but it would require right off the bat variances to lot area and lot width, and then potentially to setbacks as well. So it would result in a situation that could potentially end up in, basically circumventing the zoning is what it would end up resulting in. But it was, it was reviewed by staff as a consideration.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Additional questions from council before I close the public hearing? Counsel, counsel person Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mayor. I am just wondering how far apart would these two houses be from each other and also from the other properties?
So the setbacks that would be required are along the sides and rear, which I think are where the biggest concern lies, is the side setbacks are required to be a minimum of five feet on one side, but they have to equate to 15 feet total. So if you had five foot on one side, you'd have 10 feet on the other and vice versa.
And you're talking three, two sides and a back. Is that right?
The rear setback would be 10 feet required, and the front setback is 25 feet required. But along the street, it's actually 30 feet.
And then, but in between those two houses that would be built, minimum is five feet? But it could be 15 or?
So at the very minimum, you'd see them come 10 feet because at the very minimum on those sides, it would be five feet for each lot.
I just have concern about building houses that are so close together. We've just witnessed what happens when there is, you know, big houses built close together with the fires that happened. And, you know, I think there is discussion about that kind of thing that's going on. Then there's also about how far it is from the other properties, too. So I know when I read, it's always the same thing. Let me see what I'm looking at here. Hold on. The change of zone promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the community and will not result in a significant adverse effect on the surrounding area. Can you explain to me how changing the zone promotes health and safety and general welfare of the community? What does that mean?
So I think the point of that is that we're designing things, or we're, we're not designing. We're reviewing things based on code requirements to meet the general welfare of the community, and our goal here is to do that. So meeting building fire codes, that's all a part of this process, and it has all been, and it will all be analyzed through a building permit process if it were to be approved.
Okay. And how many people have you heard from that are in favor of this?
We did get one call of support when it went to Planning Commission, but otherwise, six on Wheat Ridge Speaks today for opposition and a couple at Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Before I close the hearing, are there any other, any further questions? Ms. Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So during the presentation, it had been mentioned that the intention is to rezone this property and then subdivide it. So in essence, it would be two R1B lots. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's the intent.
And, and the purpose of this is to build two homes on what would otherwise allow for only one home due to the lot?
That's correct. Yes, that's correct.
And so I guess this would kind of be directed at the applicant. I mean, what, what, what is the attraction to two homes as opposed to one? I mean, because we have had, you know, discussions around accessory dwelling units as well, as well as short-term rentals. So you had mentioned that this would be a home for likely you and your family and then, and maybe another family. And, and I'm just wondering what the, yeah, attraction is to two homes as opposed to one.
Yeah, so to be honest, I mean, it's almost being a half an acre of a lot. It's, it's a bit much more than we want to maintain. It just, it fits, you know, being just, is it 20,000? Yeah, being over, over 10,000 square foot lot. It's, it's as big as we want it to be. And, you know, just we can have a plenty, plenty size of a house. If we want to have a 3,000 square foot or less-sized house, it fits, we feel like it fits better on, if it's, if it's split on its own lot. So it kind of takes care of what we're looking for. And then it's an obviously an opportunity to, like I said before, give someone else an opportunity for, to live in, in the neighborhood.
Thank you. And, and going back to what Councilmember Ohm had kind of alluded to earlier. So the surrounding areas are prime, I mean, not primarily, but we have several different residential zonings as well as duplexes in that area, correct?
That's correct.
And this, I mean, this is pretty close to Everett. And, I mean, so this is an area in which we want to attract families into. And so the fact that we could attract one or two families instead of just one, I mean, it fits within the neighborhoods still. Like, there's still single-family homes unless I'm missing something, correct?
Still a single family, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselperson Weaver?
Just wanted to clarify. Would, would both homes face or have driveways to 38th Avenue?
The driveways directed by engineering would come from Independence Court.
So for both properties, they'd be?
For both.
Okay, so they wouldn't be onto 38th. So, so chances are they would be facing Independence and not 38th? I'm, I'm just curious.
Most likely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselperson Houghton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Stephanie, I'm curious with the amount of lot, the lot size that this property has, is one of the options that Mr. Hill and his fans could have considered would be to split the lots and get R2 zoning on 38th and then keep the R1 or go for R1B on the northern part of the lot? Is that an option they could have pursued?
Right, so 9,000 square feet for Residential 2 and then 7,500. So they would have the lot area for that, just to keep the, the, it hasn't been subdivided yet, though. And it needs, the subdivision needs to meet the zoning. So I think that's where the issue lies.
Okay, but could, could they have actually gone for something like that and gone for a lot big enough with R2 to build two units on it? Isn't that like 20, 12,500?
Right. So if they wanted to do two duplexes, that would result in, that's what you're talking about for two lots?
Yeah, one, one duplex and one single-family. I think they would have had enough lot coverage to?
They would have enough lot coverage for that. The problem is that we can't control what then gets built, so it could wind up being two duplexes.
Okay, all right. So this option actually is less dense than some of the other options they could have considered under the zoning, is that right? By going through a zone change, there were some other consistent with neighborhood zoning options that would have been denser?
Right.
Okay, all right. And can you remind me, or if anybody knows about what the traffic count is on 38th Avenue?
I think it's Steve Wynn, Russ Higgins. I don't know if Russ, you know that answer? Steve wins on two, Steve or Russ. Let's see, we'll get them on screen here.
That's kind of a slightly different department, but.
Yeah, Steve wins on, Steve.
Okay, yeah, great. If anyone knows.
I do not have the number, but I can look it up real quick.
Okay, I'm pretty sure. I know from my work west of Kipling that it runs around 15,000 cars a day west of Kipling. And I imagine that, that east of Kipling, it probably gets a little bit more. So I feel like this is, you know, a, a good treatment of this property to stay consistent with the neighborhood and it's not as dense as some other proposals or as dense as some surrounding properties. There are several duplexes along that strip of 38th on the north side. So this would actually be less dense than several of the properties in the area. So thank you for answering the questions. And, and Steve, if you have that number, great. If, if not, I'm fairly confident it's over 15,000 cars a day.
Thank you. Before I close the public hearing, is there any further questions from council?
Mr. Mayor, I have some numbers on traffic numbers.
Okay, Ms. Wynn, please.
On 38th, next to Independence, we get about 13,382 cars. That's 24 hours total. For the east of there, we have about 12,500. So it's below the 15,000.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Dozeman?
Thanks, Mayor. Stephanie, do you mind just describing kind of the other side, the sizes of the lots on Independence? Like, are they close to a, you know, quarter of an acre? Or, you know, just by splitting this lot, how big? How, if, if they're going to be comparable to the other, the other lots?
Yeah, so it would be quite comparable to what you're seeing with the Residential 2 lots, most likely. So somewhere in between Residential 2 and Residential 1, just due to the size. So with Residential 2, you're seeing approximately 9,000 square foot lots. And then with Residential 1, it's expanding out to about 12,500. So most of what's in the vicinity is closer to that 9,000 square feet. So this would exceed that by a little bit, but it would be less than what's required by R1.
Thanks.
Okay, before I close the public hearing, are there any more questions from council? Mr. Ohm?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one last question for staff. The property that is adjacent to the subject property, when I zoom in, it looks like it's two lots that go north-south. Does that look about right, or is that one lot?
That's two lots on the east side.
Yeah.
That's two lots.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any more questions? I'm going to close the public hearing. Ms. Weaver, a motion is in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 01-2022, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 9605 38th Avenue from Residential 1, R1, to Residential 1B, R1B, on the second reading. But it take effect 15 days after final publication for the following reasons. One, the Planning Commission has recommended approval of the rezoning after conducting a proper public hearing. Number two, the proposed rezoning has been reviewed by the Community Development Department, which has forwarded its recommendation of approval. And number three, the proposed rezoning has been found to comply with the criteria for review in Section 26-112 of the Code of Laws.
Second?
We have a motion and a second by Ms. Counselperson Hoppe. Do we have discussion on the motion? And if council would like, down at the bottom, you can raise your hand. That's pretty easy to see, or you can raise your real hand. Either way. Ms. Dozeman?
Are we, are, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So initially, I, I understood where some of the comments were coming from with the surrounding neighbors. But most of the time, this, this group that we've, that we've come to know that is fighting density is, is fighting higher-density projects. And this rezoning is in line with a single-family home. It, it fits with the character of the neighborhood and is appropriate in this area, especially along 38th, which is one of our major corridors. And so I, I'm, I'm going to support this, and I really appreciate residents moving into Wheat Ridge and wanting to invest in Wheat Ridge and wanting to stay here. So welcome to the neighborhood, and I hope you don't get too much flack.
Thank you. Councilmember Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm also going to support this. You know, initially looking at this and then looking at the comments, I, you know, I, again, I understand the, the need to not want density in the neighborhoods, but this is, and including the, the, the comments themselves, pretty much said that they were okay with two houses here. They just didn't like the road in which we. just didn't like the road in which we got there. They would prefer that it stayed R one, because there's, there's some sentiment to R one. But I do think we should understand that and remember that most of our, our planning maps were just left over from Jeffco when we incorporated fifty years ago. So, um, it's, it's, it's not, it's not laid down by, by any higher power, it's just the way it was. So, um, I, I do think we should look at that. And this fits the character of that neighborhood, and this is exactly where, right off of the street, there's not going to affect traffic on the, um, on Independence Court, because the people on the end of the street aren't going to drive all the way down to, to bother the people on the end of the court. So, um, this is right off of Thirty-Eighth, it's right between Everett and Wheat Ridge. Um, so this, this feeds homeschools for, for, uh, for elementary, middle, and high schools. Um, this is a good investment in our neighborhood, so I'm definitely going to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Council, Councilmember Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and I, uh, I would just like to, uh, reiterate, you know, the same things that Councilwoman Dozeman and Council, Councilman Stites said, that yes, this is, um, you know, we are trying to create, um, opportunities for people to be in our community and also for people to, um, be able to move their families into our school systems. And, um, you know, we have one middle school and one high school, and, you know, supporting those are important. On top of also, if you look at just across the street, there's a lot that's not much bigger than this one, that houses four duplexes. And then right to the east of it, there's these other smaller lots, so it's not just standing out in the, in the middle of, of nowhere by itself. And R one B is not the smallest lot that we have in our communities. We have R one C. And, um, you know, the variance process is not supposed to negate zoning, and if there were so many variances that needed to be done, then this is actually the appropriate way to do it. And so I appreciate staff coming up to this conclusion. And, um, welcome to the neighborhood, Mr. Hill.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I, I, I agree with the other council members. This is a minor arterial, and I want to say thank you to staff. Um, I'm a little, I think, you know, to have it at R one B, I'm, I'm a little surprised it's maybe not the R two, considering the proximity of, uh, all the R twos along Thirty-Eighth. Um, and I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Councilperson Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too will be supporting this in a slight variation on the comment tonight about, you know, excitement for, you know, potential future families that will help support our neighborhood schools. Um, these lot sizes are also perfect for what we need, um, to provide great new, uh, ranch-style homes. Providing smaller lots makes it more feasible. And if we want to see, um, seniors age into our neighborhoods, um, from larger homes, these are the kind of lot sizes that we can see happen with that. So it's not a prescriptive use of that, but, you know, by taking this approach to zoning, we're providing housing opportunities for, for families and seniors alike. So I will be supporting this, and I appreciate that, uh, the applicant actually is coming forth with a single-family housing option instead of some of the more dense options that were available with, given the site of, the size of the site and the location of the site. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I am just wondering, I know this location around there, but are there, and I know that, um, he would be able to build the thirty-five feet high, are there other houses around in that area that match that?
We're not taking questions now, so that, that may be a comment, I guess.
Yeah, because I just haven't seen that, and that might be part of the concern about what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Council, Council, um, Member Noslerbeck.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to say that I too will be supporting this, um, tonight. Uh, came into the meeting, um, taking an extra look at this just because of what has happened with some of the dividing of lots, um, in District Four, specifically on Everett. And when I was out knocking doors, talking to folks, this is so important, um, to really keeping our, our neighborhoods, um, as the neighborhoods that we, um, we all moved to, to Wheat Ridge for. And, uh, I just, after hearing, um, Stephanie's really thorough report, um, I'm, I'm really confident that, um, I, I think this will be a good, a good investment for our neighborhoods. And, um, just agree with, uh, Councilmember Dozeman on the importance of, um, you know, building our neighborhoods and our community schools and all of us coming together. So, um, I'll be supporting this tonight. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Uh, seeing no further, no further, uh, discussion on the motion, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hands. And will a clerk please record the votes? I appear to be missing a council member somewhere. Wait, sorry. Well, we're, we're going to go yeas and nays. So these are the yeas. Okay, all the yeas, put your hand down. All those against the motion, please raise your hand. You're mute, Mr., you're mute, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, the motion is passed by a vote of seven to one, with Councilmember Hutchinson voting negative.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, we will go to, uh, Agenda Item Number Three. Uh, Councilmember Hutchinson, would you please introduce this item?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, this is motion to accept grants from the State of Colorado Highway Safety Office in the amount of forty-four thousand, three hundred fifty-nine dollars to provide education, outreach, and enforcement for traffic and pedestrian safety. The Colorado Highway Safety Office, HSO, has awarded two grants to the Wheat Ridge Police Department for law enforcement purposes. The first grant is in the amount of nineteen thousand, three hundred fifty-nine dollars, and is for the purposes of traffic safety. The second grant is in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars, and is for the purposes of pedestrian safety. The Colorado Highway Safety Office requires City Council to officially accept these grants.
Thank you very much. Th- uh, this will be a, a motion of the council. Um, Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do have Chief Murtha here. I think he has a few words he would like to say. No PowerPoint this evening, though, Mayor.
Oh, okay. Chief Murtha.
Sorry to, sorry to not have that PowerPoint for you, Mr. Mayor, but.
That's, that's all right. I'm sure we'll, I'm sure we'll need to sit through another one at some point.
Well, if you tell me. Um, just a few words on this. This is obviously, uh, this is, uh, free money. This is no grant match or anything of that type. In the last two years, we've had thirteen fatal accidents in the city of Wheat Ridge. Eight of those were pedestrian fatalities, and this is an opportunity for us to do special enforcement, um, to really, uh, take, uh, officers who aren't on duty and create a force multiplier. Um, for us, traffic enforcement is, um, is something we take seriously, and we, we look forward to be more proactive in the future if, if you're willing to accept these grants.
Uh, thank you very much, Chief Murtha. Before we go to questions from council, I would like to invite the public to, uh, speak on this item number three. If you would like to speak, you may, uh, do so by raising your hand in the virtual format, or raising your hand if you're on the telephone by hitting star nine, and we were happy to bring you into the meeting. And I'll ask Ms. Scheck if we have anyone with their hands raised.
We do not, Mayor. No hands.
Okay, I will then close our public comment on this item and open it up to questions from council. Uh, Councilwoman Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am excited that the city is, uh, receiving, hopefully we will be approving, uh, the receipt of these funds for both of these things. They're, uh, obviously really important for us to make strides and improvements, especially the pedestrian fatality. Um, I do have, I have two questions and then a comment. Um, Chief, can you clarify when you say eight pedestrian deaths, were those all pedestrians, or does that include pedestrian and bicyclists?
Uh, I'm sorry, that includes both pedestrians and cyclists. So it's anything that's not a motor vehicle, mo- on motor vehicle collision.
Okay, so.
Or a single motor vehicle.
So vulnerable road users.
Yes.
It's inclusive of that. And then, um, and then I'm just, I'm curious, and maybe this, maybe your answer there sort of answers the second question, but it was a little confusing reading the memo because it's referencing, uh, pedestrian-related traffic, uh, injuries and fatalities, but that the enforcement will be conducted primarily on bicycles. Can you share with me a little bit, um, can you, I guess, one, I'm curious what the differences between how many pedestrian and how many bicyclist fatalities there are, and how you're planning on using the funds for, for bicyclists?
Yeah, so ju- just because we're on bicyclists doesn't mean we're only patrolling for bicyclists. Uh, we do a lot of, we, we find a lot of pedestrians who are on foot are at fault. So this is our ability to get around difficult intersections and contact people, hopefully educate people who are crossing the street against the, uh, against the light or not in an intersection without trying to do that in a vehicle. So, um, it may be a bit of both, but it really isn't, it shouldn't give you the impression that we're, because we're on bikes, we're only enforcing bicyclists. We're really trying to be, uh, very mobile in very active and congested areas. That's what that gets to.
Okay. Um, well, I hope, I mean, I, I hope we'll be enforcing, uh, you know, pedestrians, bicyclists, and cars. Um, my son was recently hit by a car and is about to be the poster child for pedestrian safety in the state of Colorado. Luckily, he's okay, everybody. Um, but he's lucky, he was crossing in, in the intersection, and so it's really incumbent on drivers to be mindful and aware of people who are walking, and especially in Wheat Ridge where we are lacking safe places for pedestrians to walk. And after snow like we've had recently, and we've got commercial property owners who are shoveling their snow into the sidewalk, um, and that actually forces people to have to depart the sidewalk and walk into the street to get where they're going. And I know we have community-based policing and do a good job of that, but I really want, um, I really hope as a city, we're mindful of, um, you know, just being aware that the conditions in our city make it hard for people to safely walk and bike, and that doesn't make it okay for them to do dangerous and illegal behaviors. But, um, we've had fatalities in the city where pedestrians have had no choice but to go into, into the streets. So I just, I hope we're mindful of that. And, and just something I'd like everyone to be, um, a little bit more cognizant of, um, in the memo, it says auto versus pedestrian crashes, and it's actually drivers slash motorists. It's not the cars, it's the drivers of the cars that are, um, part of those crashes. So the cars themselves do not hit bicyclists and pedestrians, it is the drivers of the cars. So if we can, when we're using language around this, try and use motorist or, or driver, I think that, um, it helps everyone be cognizant around safety with that. So, um, that's my little, my thing, something I care deeply and passionately about, especially since it's literally hit close to home recently. Um, so, uh, good work on getting these grants. I'm excited that the city's gone for it, and I really hope twenty twenty-two is a much, much safer year for bicyclists, pedestrians, and people in their cars. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm sure we're all glad that your son is, uh, not injured, so. Uh, additional, uh, discussion on this item. Okay, seeing none, Ms. Hutchinson, may I have an, uh, a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to accept grants from the State of Colorado Highway Safety Office in the amount of forty-four thousand, three hundred fifty-nine dollars to provide education, outreach, and enforcement for traffic and pedestrian safety.
Second. Uh, we have a motion and a second by Councilmember Stites. Um, is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand, and will a clerk please record the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed with me unmuted by a vote of eight to nothing. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. With that, we will, uh, go to Agenda Item Number Four. Uh, Councilmember Ohm, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to amend and extend the contract for professional services to ACOM Technical Services Incorporated, Greenwood Village, Colorado, for fiscal year twenty twenty-two in an amount not to exceed one million, seven hundred seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred seventy-eight dollars in approved payments for ongoing program management services for the Investing For the Future program at issue. On January twenty-seven, twenty seventeen, the firm ACOM Technical Services Incorporated was selected by the city's established procurement process to provide multi-year professional engineering and land use planning services for the TE Bond Fund investing for the future projects and to serve as an extension of staff as needed for review and assistance in delivery of private-related development in the Clerck Creek Crossing and Wheat Ridge Ward station areas, and more particularly now for the Wadsworth Boulevard Improvement Project. The scope and related fees for ACOM services in twenty twenty-two have been negotiated, and city council action is requested for the approval of the ACOM contract amendment and extension.
Uh, thank you very much. Well, this will be a, a motion of the council. Uh, Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
Um, I'll just add a few things, and then we, um, Steve Wynn and, and Russ Higgins are both online to answer any questions you may have. But, um, as, as the council action forum said, we've, we've been working with ACOM for several years now, and, and as it's staff extension, they've been doing great work. And, um, I know this seems like a large number, but the one point seven million, one point four of this is for the Wadsworth project specifically. Um, they have about ten staff that they are providing engineers, um, uh, inspectors, and, uh, uh, project managers that are helping us with this project. Um, and they only, we only pay what they bill on, so, um, their contract is, um, I think always fairly large, but I don't think in, in a year, we've actually paid them, um, the full contract amount, because it's just billed for what services they provide. So, Steve or, um, Russ, do you have anything to add to that?
Uh, they've been a great firm to work with. They, they do have a great expertise, and yeah, Wadsworth is showing with the public outreach and, and what they're doing with the residents. And, uh, yeah, uh, I enjoy working with ACOM because of their professionalism.
Uh, thank you. Um, Steve, I saw your hand up. Would you like to say something?
Yeah, I, I was like, as Patrick mentioned, uh, we're, uh, third year into the contract. In the past couple of years, they did a good job on project cost saving. Uh, at the end of the year, they give us an overall report, and typically they were well below the hundred percent that they need to utilize. So, uh, their practice is that they're doing what they can to save on, on city's spending on, on budget. So, uh, I just want to echo that, that they do a good job of budget control.
Thank you. Uh, before we go to questions from council, I will open this up to members of the public. If you'd like to speak on this Agenda Item Number Four, you may do so now. If you will, uh, raise your hand in the Zoom virtual format, uh, or, uh, unmute with the star nine if you're on the telephone, we'll be happy to bring you into the meeting. And I'll see if we have anyone with their hands raised.
No, Mayor.
Okay, it looks like we don't, so we will, uh, we will conclude that portion of this item and go to questions from council. Do we have any questions from council? Okay, seeing none, uh, Councilmember Ohm, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to amend and extend the contract for professional services to ACOM Technical Services Incorporated Greenwood Village for fiscal year twenty twenty-two in an amount not to exceed one million, seven hundred seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred seventy-eight dollars in approved payments for ongoing program management services for the Investing For the Future program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilmember Hoppe. Do we have discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand, and will a clerk please record the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passed, as you announced.
Thank you very much. Uh, that brings us to, uh, that concludes the agenda items that we have. We'll now go to, uh, City Managers Matters. Mr. Goff.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, we do have a special study session, um, coming up, so I'll just keep this quick. Uh, we're off next week, um, for President's Day holiday, uh, but we, we are coming back on, um, February twenty-eighth with a regular meeting and, um, another special study session to give a homelessness update. Um, and we plan on do- doing a, um, very, uh, extensive, uh, update for the public, um, and council, of course, uh, of what's gone on since the last community meeting we had on homelessness, uh, almost, I don't know, Ali, how, was that a year or so ago? Um, we had a very, we had a large meeting on, uh, with the community on homelessness, and a lot has happened, a lot of, a lot of positive things, uh, moving in the right direction. So any publics out there listening, please join us, um, on the, uh, twenty-eighth, and, uh, we'll give you some updates on our actions on homelessness. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Uh, City Attorneys Matters, Mr. Dahl.
Nothing tonight, but I'll see you at the study session.
We'll be there. Uh, we'll go to Elected Officials Matters. If you have a, uh, a, uh, report, I will be happy to, uh, call on you. We'll start with, um, uh, Councilmember Stites, and then go to, uh, Councilmember Noslerbeck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. Um, Ms. Weaver and I-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. Um, Ms. Weaver and I have a District Three meeting, uh, coming up this Saturday, the nineteenth, at the Rec Center. It's in the Carnation Room, uh, so nine AM. So we hope to see all of our District Three neighbors there for that. So, uh, we'll see you then. Thank you.
Councilmember Nosler Beck?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, councilmember, uh, Dozeman and I have a community conversation, um, event happening on Wednesday night at six PM, and that's going to be all virtual. Um, and we just have, um, about an hour or so on the, the calendar for community members to come in and, and get an update from, uh, councilmember Dozeman and I on things happening in District Four, as well as, um, uh, to hear from, to hear from neighbors on, on what's going on in their area. And then also, um, District Four is really busy right now on the twenty-third. I think, I think it's four-thirty to six-thirty. Someone can probably help me with that. But the sub-area plan, uh, meetings are happening in District Four. So, um, next couple of Wednesday nights are pretty busy in District Four. See you there.
Okay, stay tuned. Thank you.
Happy Valentine's Day. Sorry, I wanted to get that in. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Uh, councilmember Holteen?
Thank you, Mayor Starker. Uh, happy Valentine's Day to everybody. If we were in person, I would have brought you a little, uh, candy hearts, but they're just virtual this year. Um, to councilmember Nosler Beck, Beck mentioned the meeting next Wednesday, and the details are in fact four-thirty to six-thirty at the Recreation Center. It's open house style and it's a great way, uh, to start, uh, providing your thoughts early on the sub-area planning for Forty-Fourth Avenue. Um, I wanted to thank Terry Gale, uh, for receiving the Black History Month proclamation. Terry is, uh, my neighbor, as well as my friend and somebody I have just high regard for. We're really fortunate to have him part of our community and that he's serving us on the Race and Equity Task Force. Um, I just wanted to read really quickly. I think everyone here is aware that Jeffco has rescinded the, the mask mandate. And my son is a Boy Scout and, um, should be at Boy Scouts tonight, but he's downstairs because I couldn't drive him. But, um, his Boy Scout troop actually sent out an email tonight that I thought I would just read because I think it just best captures where we are at this point in time. And, uh, you know, I think the Scouts are exemplary for how they endeavor to, to participate as good citizens and community members. So, uh, the email that was sent out said, um, Jeffco Public Health Department has revoked the mandatory mask mandate. This means that masks will no longer be required at our meetings. Parents and Scouts should decide what's best for their family around mask usage at scout meetings. There are still strong feelings on both sides of this issue. Please remember that a scout is courteous and kind. Harassment of people who have chosen to continue to the wear, to wear the mask or who have chosen not to wear the mask is not appropriate behavior for a scout. And I just thought that was the best advice and guidance I've heard, um, at this point. So let's continue to be kind and courteous of our neighbors. Some, um, are still really have direct health threats around, um, COVID. And, um, I hope we've come a long ways as a community and I just am looking forward to good weather where we can all just be outside with fresh air. So that's all I have for tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, councilmember Ohm?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I had a citizen that wanted me to, uh, kind of reach out to everybody and just remind them that, uh, there's a code red community notification that you can sign up for, uh, through Jeffco. Um, this is in response to the, the Marshall fires.
Thank you. Um, councilmember Weaver?
I just wanted to, uh, reiterate what, uh, councilmember Stites said about our meeting this Saturday. And, um, and, um, Steve is still on. I just had a quick question. I've had several constituents just ask me what all of the, um, roadwork that's happening on Thirty-Eighth is. Uh, and what that involves. Or, 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 Mr. Goff, can you answer that question? Just seems like they keep going back and forth on Thirty-Eighth and, and they're doing something, but I'm not sure what.
Could I ask where about on Thirty-Eighth we're talking about?
Uh, well, it seems like they've gone in front of the farm like six different times. I mean, mov- moving down towards the east and back. And it, it seems to be between Kipling and Applewood. Um, and it seems to always move. Um, I don't know, uh, Mr. Stites, do you, do you have any comment on that? Are you seeing that? I know that there are people, people on your side of, of, uh, Thirty-Eighth as well.
I see Mr. Higgins with his hand, uh, raised. He may be able to provide us a hand. Russ?
Thank you.
Go ahead, Russ, if you're unmuted. He may be on a phone.
Okay.
Star, star what? Six, Ally?
Star, star six, uh, unmutes him.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, before, while he's waiting, come on, uh, councilmember Weaver, I've noticed that too. And it's, it's, it's in my, it's on my stretch of Thirty-Eighth also, um, east of Kipling. And it looks like they're doing, um, drainage or, uh, they're cleaning out, uh, drainage ways or storm sewers or something. Does that sound familiar, Russ or Steve?
That would be my guess, but if anything in terms of permit work, Russ should have ideas in terms of, you know, if they're done by other parties, they typically would get right away permit from us and we would have a good idea what they're working on. Uh, I'm waiting for Russ to come back online here.
Uh, Russ, are you able to join us? It looks like you're.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir, I can hear you now.
Okay, yeah, um, along Thirty-Eighth there, w- we've got several, Jefferson County is also putting in a fiber backbone in the city. So I know they've been on Thirty-Eighth quite a bit. Um, east of Kipling, west of Kipling, and that, and they're coming back in. Um, the process comes in and where they come in with a truck and they've got to find out where all the underground utilities in. Then they come in with the actual crew to put that, um, underground fiber cable in. So, uh, I know Thirty-Eighth has been very active in, in that, uh, um, right away permits too. And, and several of them throughout the city that, that we're having going on that's re, directly related to Jefferson County schools.
And, and just to reiterate, what, what does that fiber cable do for, for folks or for schools and?
So they're, they're, they're tying the schools together with a fiber optic network. I think that'll allow them to, from a central headquarters to do that. And then Jefferson County Schools is going to allow the city of Wheat Ridge to also utilize that backbone, should we ever need it to tie signals together and other, uh, other items that we're going to need, uh, throughout the, as, as we grow in technology.
Great. Thank you so much. I really appreciate the explanation.
Thank you very much. Any additional, uh, councilmember, uh, Dozeman?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to touch on, uh, what Mr. Jared DeTulio had mentioned in his public comment. Um, to celebrate Walt Pettit's, uh, eightieth birthday this last year, um, the Rotary and some community members, um, put together an endowment fund that would go for a scholarship from the Rotary Club on behalf of Walt Pettit. Um, Walt Pettit has been, um, a Rotarian for many years, as well as, um, involved with the Carnation Festival, uh, since its inception. Um, so he's a lifelong resident of Wheat Ridge and gives back to the community. So, uh, I did give a portion, sorry, puppy, a portion of my council funds, uh, to, to the endowment fund and welcome any other council members that are interested to do so. To do so, um, happy Valentine's Day, meeting this Wednesday, February sixteenth, six PM, virtual, uh, for District Four. And then the sub-area plan is coming up on February twenty-third, so lots going on and lots of ways to be engaged. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Uh, any other elected officials' matters? Uh, council, councilmember, um, Hutchinson?
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to mention that I have seen Girl Scouts selling cookies out there. So if, uh, anybody's inclined, I know very few people who don't like Girl Scout cookies. Um, let's support the Girl Scouts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other elected officials' matters? Uh, I, uh, I will say that, uh, I want to thank all the member, all the, uh, citizens that joined me last Saturday for coffee with the mayor. We had some very good discussions and we'll be coming back on that, uh, second, second Saturday in, uh, March. My, the time is flying. So is there any, any further business to be conducted at this meeting? Then, uh, I will give everybody a happy, uh, Valentine's Day. I've been practicing this for a little bit, so. Oh, you're very good. Yeah, actually, that's, that's it there. Okay. Uh, so anyway, thank you all for being here. We're going to, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. Um, and we will have a special study session that starts in five minutes. So we will, uh, we will adjourn until about, uh, twenty-three minutes after the hour. Thank you.
For the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. I would like to start our meeting off as we do with most of our meetings with the public comment. If if you would like to comment on any item that is on the agenda, we're happy to take your comments at this time. The agenda item for tonight's meeting is satisfying public notice and publication requirements. So if you would like to speak on agenda item number one, this is your opportunity to do so. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand in the virtual format or unmute yourself on the telephone. And I believe that is star nine, and we'll bring you into the meeting. And I will.
No, Mayor. No, no one's, no one's in attendance. Thank you.
Okay, then we will, we will move past our public's right to speak and go to our agenda item number one. Mr. Goth, we have a staff presentation on this item.
We do. Thank you, Mayor. So this item was brought forward to you on January tenth. This is an annual requirement by state statutes to notify the public where we post our public notices and and publish our legal doc or legal notices. And there was some discussion at January tenth meeting if if the Jeffco transcript is the appropriate publication to be posting or publishing those legal notifications and if we could look at other options. And Mr. Dahl did the work to research the statute and provide you some recommendations. Mr. Dahl.
Thank you, Mr. Goth. Council, you have my memo dated February the ninth, and it's in the packet. And so let me just make a few points about it. I took the opportunity in the memo to really sort of summarize for you how exactly does the city, what kind of notices, et cetera, does the city put out? And and in what categories and what are the requirements for each of those categories? Those requirements kind of bridge across state statutes, charter, and the city's code. But I summarize them in three categories: public notice for meetings, public notice for hearings, and publication requirements for ordinances, because that's how they, that's how they fall out. That's how they're grouped. And so as you see for the, in the memo, public notice requirements for meetings, let's take that first. Seventy-two hours advance notice as a result of, not the statute, but in fact, council's rules. It requires physical posting at the City Hall posting site along with public notice on the website. That's the public meeting notice requirement present. There's no requirement for publication of a public meeting notice in the papers. So let's distinguish that from public notice requirements for hearings. And of course, hearings take place within your public meetings, but they have their own requirements. And those are hearings for the, basically in the land use code for land use matters. And you had one of those tonight on the rezoning hearing. There's three requirements in the land use code for that: posted notice on the property, mailed notice to property owners within a certain distance, and published notice ten days in advance in a newspaper or general circulation in the city. That's probably the most extensive notice requirement that we have is for the land use cases. And council will recall that at least the posted sign notice got a lot of attention within the last, what, six months or so? And the council directed that there should be some refinements to size of the sign where it's posted, et cetera. And I won't revisit those. Land use cases, three different ways: physical posting on the property, mailed notice to adjacent property owners or within a distance, and published notice in a newspaper or general circulation. Last, last category: publication requirements for ordinances. The charter is specific on this. Requires ordinance to be published in full after first reading and then published after second. But the requirement for publication in the charter gives you three different ways to do it. Instead of the notice for public hearings being you've got to do all three, in the charter, the publication requirement for notices is one of three. And there's a list, and that list is that that they be published in a, in a newspaper general circulation or posted at City Hall or posted on the website. And and the city clerks on on the line will be able to tell you how, you know, we address that. But we typically do publish in, in the paper at least after first reading. And and I'm sure the city clerk can elaborate on that. But those requirements in the charter are alternative. So you could, for example, post it on the website and be done, or post it at City Hall and be done, or publish it in a newspaper general circulation and be done, or do more than one of those. But the minimum is one of them, and you get to choose. And and any one of them will satisfy the requirement. You have a kind of a tradition policy of doing more than just one, as as you'll be aware, and the city clerk can remind us. So tho- those are the three categories. Those are the requirements. But I want to make two other points about legal publication requirements, because I realize one of the basic questions here is, well, what about the Gazette? Can we use that when we do publication requirements? And the the answer is no, because a legal publication of general circulation has to be, has to meet two requirements: both a legal publication under the statute and a newspaper of generals, of general circulation or the general publication. Legal publication under the statute, I've given you the statutory side and the detail. But to be a legal publication under the statute, it has to be published at least once weekly. And you'll notice there's, I don't think there are any tri-weekly publications in Colorado where it's published three times a week. Generally, there are dailies and weeklies and monthlies, but to be a legal publication, it's got to be published at least weekly. Also, over the years, there has been raised the question of, well, the Jefferson trans, the transcript, even though it's published weekly, is it really of general circulation because of its number of subscribers? And I've dug into that carefully, and the answer is no. As you see in the memo, the number of subscribers is not the defining factor. It's, is it of general interest? Is it generally available by sale or 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 subscription? And that's true for the transcript. It's also true, of course, for for the Gazette. That's available generally for by, in in various ways, and it publishes news of general availability. But the transcript isn't a legal publication under the statute. Why? Because it's not published often enough. It's just published once monthly. So that's the the thumbnail sketch. And so you you have options, but the Gazette is not available where you have a publication in a newspaper of general circulation requirement, because that has to be a legal publication, and that has to be more often than just monthly. It has to be at least weekly. I'm sure there may be questions, but I'll stop there and entertain any questions, discussion, whatever.
Thank you, Mr. Dahl. Are there questions? Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you. So can somebody remind me what we, if if I'm remembering this correctly, we typically put it online, put it in the transcript, and post it in front of the, in front of City Hall. Is that true?
Steve, help me out here. Unmute and help me out. But there's the distinction, of course, between what we do with ordinances, what we do with meeting notices, and what we do for land use code hearings, which vary.
Yes. We post those on the bulletin board on, that's located at the front door of City Hall. At the same time, public notice is required to be given, whether that's publication in a newspaper or however. We post notice of anything that requires a notice in that bo, in that bulletin board. Did I answer the question, Jerry?
I, I think so. Yep.
Do it, but do, my guess, my question is, do we also do the website and the transcript?
Oh, yes. I, yes, we're still doing the transcript, because that was the last thing council voted to use as the official notice.
Sure. So so we could do all of those three and then also maybe add something in the Gazette that says, go to here on the website for upcoming information on these types of things, like not specifically, not specifically Janice's, you know, what, rezoning her driveway? But it's, if you want to know about property rezonings, go here on the city website. So we could just put something in the Gazette like that that isn't necessarily stuff that, information that could potentially be past information?
Yes.
Or or information that, you know, maybe it won't even be, it won't be scheduled yet. So we won't, we'll say, not scheduled yet, but coming up. We can just say, go here for these types of things, this type of information in the Gazette. And that doesn't have to be a part of this official action that we take on where we, where we're posting our stuff.
The only issue I would have with that is, a- as you alluded to, the timing, because, of course, the Gazette publishes monthly. So we're regularly going to be giving notice in the Gazette of something that is either within the notice period or has already happened. So the Gazette, whatever we publish in the Gazette will not satisfy any requirement as a notice, except occasionally.
I think it should just be something, if if we, if we think that we want to loop the Gazette into our stuff, then I think it needs to be very general. If you want to know about what land cases are coming up in your, in your area, go to the website this spot. If you want to know about other public hearings that are coming up, go to the website this spot. And and not specifically anything that may be happening or coming up on our schedule. Just reminding people, this is where you find this information. You can go to the City Hall, you can go to the transcript, you can go to the website.
I, I'm fine with that. I think that would make infinite sense. It probably wouldn't be a very expensive thing, but I'd love to ask the advertising rate desk at the Gazette about that before we promise anything.
I objected to that, Mr. Patrick. And and yeah, we could do a a small ad for about two hundred and fifty dollars a month. And just, just again, to provide readers the locations where they should, can go to, to to find this, out this information.
Thank you very much, Patrick. If the council wants to spend three thousand dollars a year in the Gazette to do that, we don't have any problem. Councilperson Holtein and then councilperson Noslerbeck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Ms. Hoppe. I, you know, I think what we've been doing has been, you know, a, a nice approach to notice and that it's showing up in different places. I think what's really important is consistency and accessibility for these notices. So I think the combination of the transcript and the physical posting in the website really, you know, recognizes that we've got residents who have different communication needs. So I, you know, I'd like us to continue doing that. We did not actually approve the website, I believe, last time. Is that correct? We, we just approved the transcript in the City Hall posting?
As I recall, we also approved the website, because that was around the time the state legislature passed the statute to which Mr. Dahl referred earlier. And I may be off by a year, because my memory of two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty is gone.
Well, our resolution that City Council adopted said that the bulletin board out front is the official location for meeting notices, and the transcript is the official location for legal, um, legal pub, publications. So, but we still post on the website. But the resolution right now says you will post in the Jeffco transcript.
Okay. I, I mean, I'd like us to make the website an official notice as well, because I think what we need to recognize is that while we have a lot of residents who aren't online, we have an overwhelming majority who are, who don't get the transcript and who don't come to City Hall. So I think part of meeting our residents where they are is to really integrate that web publication aspect of it, so that it's, it's, you know, something we're obliging ourselves to and can include as part of how we communicate, how we communicate. And to Ms. Hoppe's point, I definitely support doing regular outreach through the Gazette informing our residents how we notify them. And it would be good to include in that, that ad that we take out, you know, here's how we notify you about land use, about these things. But to also make sure we're including Wheat Ridge Speaks and What's Up Wheat Ridge, so that that's, it's a, it's a specific notification. But, you know, what we're really trying to do is make sure our our residents know how to stay engaged and stay involved. And those two other platforms are really meaningful as well. So if we're going to do the Gazette, which I strongly support, because as we've heard from Mr. Nomiak, that's a way we do reach a lot of our residents, not all of them, but but an overwhelming majority of them. So I definitely support the ad and would love that we add Wheat Ridge Speaks and What's Up Wheat Ridge. And then I'm just curious if we add the web as official posting, like what would, what procedurally does that look like?
Well, let let me read what the resolution says, so everybody's clear. It says, except as otherwise permitted by sections five point two and five point one two of the charter, notices and other information required to be published in a newspaper of general circulation with this, within the city shall be made in the Jeffco transcript, except that where circumstances make publication ineffective or otherwise undesirable, the city may publish official notice on the city's website. So that's what the current resolution states. That's what we've been doing for several years.
So do, so just to confirm, we publish both?
Yes.
And?
Practices to publish website and in the transcript.
So if we were to take out an ad in the Gazette, we would miss the website as a place to look for the notifications?
Yes, and the transcript. Yep.
All right. Well, that's our, if that's our practice and we're able to communicate that and fulfill it, I don't think we need to make a resolution for that. But next January, it would be nice to see it in the resolution we've been forward. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilperson Noslerbeck.
Thanks, Mayor. I just was going to also bring up the What's Up Wheat Ridge if we're, if we're going to be doing this in kind of a nonofficial way with the Gazette, that we also are highlighting that. So thanks for bringing that up, Councilmember Holtein. And I, I think this is a, a great opportunity, you know. I appreciate all the research and everything that went into understanding the legal notice of meetings, but also just the community engagement component. I think we're, we're really fortunate to have a resource like the Gazette in, in our community. And this is a great way for us to, you know, do some of that outreach on engagement to our, our community as a, as a council that doesn't fall into that, like, official legal noticing as well and just provides another, another, I think, more welcoming accessibility component to this as well. So it, since this is an official, you know, notice, if there's ways for us to make the ad that we're running in the Gazette more welcoming and and inviting people to participate, I strongly encourage that, just because we have the, the bandwidth to do that, I think, with, with that kind of advertisement. So thanks.
Thank you. Councilperson Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I am always of the opinion, and however we can best reach our constituents and and be truly accessible and and get the information out as much as possible, I am all for that. You know, I think we've heard a couple of times how widely circulated the Gazette is or or widely read it is within our community. And it, it truly is an asset, in my opinion, to to the community. And I, I've appreciated the, the articles that that council members, fellow council members have written, you know, providers at Lutheran, Mayor Starker. And so I think that, that the information that we've been providing within the Gazette is is really great for, for our readers. And I really appreciate this clarification, because we've kind of been talking about this for a couple of years as to why we couldn't use the Gazette instead of the transcript. And I think this very clearly specifies us as to why, and so I appreciate that. And I, I just really want to thank staff for not only taking up this topic, but also giving us several avenues to reach our residents, not only through What's Up Wheat Ridge and and Wheat Ridge Speaks, but but taking into consideration ways in which we could engage them more. And and so I'm really appreciative of that.
Thank you. Councilmember Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, yeah, also thank you to staff. That was very informative. My one comment is I would, maybe that could be passed on to the planning commission, because I know when I started on the planning commission, there was always some questions about the particulars of of where the notices were sometimes from the public and or some of the other planning commissioners. And then the other thing is, I would definitely be in support of having something in the Gazette that was proposed. I know we've had some feedback in the past from constituents about, you know, hey, let's send out postcards to everybody, which I'm not sure that that is very feasible. It's very expensive. And so this would really be good to get the word out. So thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Patrick, I'm curious, do you have, how big of an ad is that? Two hundred and some odd dollars?
I, I don't know. I haven't gotten a, I request, I asked for a small ad price, so I don't know what that is yet, but we'll do some further research. I don't, I was thinking maybe a quarter of a page, if that.
Okay. One, one consideration would be maybe to, once or twice a year, take out a larger ad that's a little bit more noticeable and make sure that we're including Spanish and maybe just kind of a little bit more robust and eye-catching. I don't think we'd have to do that often. But I mean, I think if the intent of the Gazette is to, you know, make sure that we're informing people. I know we send the connections out quarterly, but people aren't readers, and I think they tend to catch ads a little bit. So if we're going to be looking at an ad, if, at least annually, maybe doing like a one bigger ad that's going to, you know, capture a bigger chunk of the page and make sure we're including Spanish interpretation in it, so that we're informing our non-English speaking neighbors, you know, how they can stay engaged and be informed also. I, I know that, like, a text, a heavy smaller ad is good, but maybe every now and then just popping up a little bit. So I'd just be curious what that cost would be, at least on an annual basis, to do a little bit bigger notice.
Yeah, we could look into that and definitely do that. And just a reminder, community engagement is a huge priority for City Council, as you know. And and the March Connections, the Connections March Edition, which we're working on right now, is, the whole theme is around engagement, and it's going to include a, an insert that is on how to get involved. So this is very timely, so the, so the March Edition will be all about how to get involved in your government. So, but we can continue that through the Gazette throughout the year and as you suggested, Ms. Holtein.
Great. Well, I am looking forward to quadrupling our Wheat Ridge Speaks comments in April, if that's what the, the March Connections is going to look like. So I'm looking forward to seeing that. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Patrick, is there any way that we can put some sort of traffic tracker that, it's like, you know, if you go onto What's Up Wheat Ridge and and it says, you know, where, how did you hear about What's Up Wheat Ridge? And so that if we're spending the money on the Gazette, we can see how many people we're actually tracking into, into our other, into our other places, like What's Up Wheat Ridge and Wheat Ridge Speaks or whatever, and and just kind of keep an eye, just to know how much. Or, you know, if it says connections, then we know how many people came to the website because of the connections. Or is there some way to do that?
Sure.
Sure. Yeah. Thank you, Councilor Hoppe, for that question. And we actually have good metrics in Wheat Ri, in What's Up Wheat Ridge specifically to to see how people are clicking on links. And then it tells us direct link, so people that are literally typing the URL into their browser specifically to get there. We can look into whether or not there can be some sort of a pop-up that says, how did you get here? But maybe we start by pulling some stats around, you know, again, we can look and see, this came from this particular newsletter blast, this came from this social media. And so, like I said, the direct link, where someone's actually, you know, manually typing that in, we get a statistic on that. It doesn't necessarily tell us, obviously, which publication they were physically reading to come from. But we can look at something to help us, to help us track that.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Mayor Pro Tim Holtein.
Thank you. This is really more of a question, what direction do you need from us tonight for this? Is, do we need to, a consensus or anything, or is this just kind of?
I think this is.
We don't need anything unless you want to change what the resolution you approved in January.
Okay, thanks.
Any further discussion on this item? Okay. Thank you all very much. We will go to a staff report. I'll go back to Mr. Goth.
Nothing else this evening. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back to elected officials' reports. Has anyone thought of anything else that they want to bring up at this time? Okay, with that, we'll, we will adjourn this special study session. Thank you all for, for coming tonight. We will not have a meeting next week, but we'll be back in a council meeting at seven o'clock on the twenty-eighth, I believe. So anyway, Happy Valentine's Day. Try to do this again. I'm not very good at it, but, you know, we'll see everybody.
Be safe and be well. Have a great.
Thank you. Bye-bye.